Don't have Tim, but yep, it's six o'clock, so let's go ahead.
All right, you're live.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is Pauline Proch, Chair of the Nantucket School Committee, and I welcome you to the school committee meeting of July 24, 2020. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jen Illa, Vice Chair. Please remember to unmute yourself before.
Aye.
Thank you. Zona Butler?
Aye.
Thank you. Steve Sortavick, Secretary?
Affirmative.
Thank you. And Tim Lepri, are you on? Not yet. Staff, when I call your name, please respond. Excuse me. Please respond in the affirmative. Superintendent Dr. Beth Hallett?
Present.
Thank you. And School Committee Clerk Logan O'Connor?
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. This open meeting of the Nantucket School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to spend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's orders requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, Nantucket School Committee is convening by video conference via Zoom app, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Please, when I call your name, please make your vote available. May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve Sortavick. May I have a second?
Jen Iller?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Zona, may I have your vote? Zona, may I have your vote to approve the agenda? You need to unmute.
I'm trying, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Steve Sortavick?
Well, I made the motion, so I think that's a perfect.
Well, sorry, I'd still like your vote. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And Jen Iller?
Jen Iller, aye.
Thank you. And Pauline, aye. Okay. Tonight, we are focusing on one agenda item. We have asked Dr. Hallett to present to us a draft plan of the back-to-school sessions that she and her 100-plus committee members have been working on. I want to reiterate, this is a draft plan, and it really is more of a verbal presentation that Dr. Hallett is going to walk us through of what the Department of Education has requested for districts to present before the end of July. And then we are required, as a district, to vote on the final application that Dr. Hallett will bring to us in early August. So I would like to open up initially for any public comment from anybody who is watching us that would like to have a comment prior to the presentation. I will say that if we have participation, I am going to open up public comment after Dr. Hallett's presentation, realizing that nobody has really had a chance to look at anything or hear anything yet. But I will give it a few minutes to see if anybody would like to enter into a question at this point. There is a bit of a time delay, so I will give a little extra time. If you bear with me, please. Jen Erickson, if there is any public comment, you could just put it in the chat for me, if you would. Nothing yet. Okay, we'll give just a few more minutes, and then we'll invite Dr. Hallett to begin her presentation. At this point, I would like to just make note that we have many of our administrative team here. I did not call and do a roll call vote of everybody. Typically, we just do a recognition of those who are presenting on the agenda. But we have everybody present this evening, and it's nice to see you all here. Okay, seeing that there's no public comment at this time, Dr. Hallett, would you like to take it away, please? Thank you.
I would be happy to. Thank you. First of all, I do want to acknowledge the district leadership team, who is present, who has been really instrumental in coming up with this draft preliminary plan that I'm going to be presenting to you. This is an overview of the preliminary plan that the Department of Education is requesting by July 31st. It is very preliminary. And so the members of the school committee have received this draft and reviewed. I'm not going to spend time going through real detail. I won't be reading it, so to speak. But I will highlight specifics from each of the sections that has been required in this preliminary plan. So it's supposed to be short and sweet. We provided a little extra detail, and I will be expounding on a little bit of that during this presentation. But I will let you know that we reserve the right to make changes and adjustments. The preliminary plan is not due to the department again until July 31st, and this is truly a working draft. So please bear with us as we continue to flesh out some of these ideas and some of these proposals, so that we can come to a more structured plan, which will be more comprehensive, closer to the August 10th date, which is the requirement from the state. So the first section of this plan is asking districts to provide key findings in our in-person learning feasibility study. So as you know, as we all know, the Department has asked us to prioritize in-person learning. So that means face-to-face students in our buildings. We looked at several different aspects that were part of this feasibility study, particularly instructional spaces in our schools, transportation, staffing, and supplies, including PPE, sanitation supplies, health and safety equipment that we need across all four schools. So the first thing we did is we measured our classrooms. We did this by hand in each of the schools, and we also used an online classroom capacity calculator, which was provided to us by the state. This does computerized simulation modeling. So that helped us to put in numbers for the size of classroom spaces and instructional spaces, and to determine how many students and teachers and adults we would fit in these spaces. So we did these for three feet of distance between, four and a half feet of distance between, and six feet of distance between. We also set up some model physical classrooms. Our facility staff put together certain classrooms and actually showed us some actual pictures of these spaces to understand how many children and adults could fit in any given instructional space. This included our non-traditional spaces, such as the gym, the cafeteria, library, and auditorium. We had to examine all of the additional costs of buying new furniture, because we have to adapt those non-traditional spaces with the necessary technology and the materials as well, and obviously, the cost of hiring additional staff as well. The transportation was one of our largest additional costs. In order to transport all eligible students to and from school, following the new required guidelines from the Department of Education and the CDC, we would incur almost $1.3 million to cover new bus drivers, additional bus routes, bus monitors. And that is if we were expected to go back in a full in-person learning model with 100% of our students in our buildings. We also have surveyed staff about returning to school, and it seems that approximately 10% of our current staff fall into a high-risk category for COVID-19. So in thinking about substitute coverage costs and Family Medical Leave Act benefits that these teachers and staff might be taking advantage of, based on their need to not come into the building, that would be an approximate cost of $1.4 million. Another $560,000 would be necessary for additional custodial staff to effectively clean our spaces. We would need approximately $375,000 to go towards our cleaning supply, additional cleaning supplies, Plexiglas, PPE for students and staff, gowns, face shields, and many other necessary items. So this was all part of our feasibility study, and it gave us a direction to go into. So in the next section of our plan, the districts are asked to share which of the three plans: a full-in-person, a hybrid plan, which means some students in the building and some students in remote learning, and remote learning for all students. Which of these would be the most feasible at each level, elementary, middle, and high school? So based on our feasibility study and based on CDC guidelines that recommend six feet of separation in order to protect the health and safety of students and staff, we have determined that a hybrid model is the most feasible model across the district, pre-K to 12. While this model presents a whole new set of challenges for us to work through, it is the one model that can allow us to offer as much in-person instruction as possible while still keeping everyone safe. As I mentioned earlier, the Department of Education has required districts to provide summaries of each of these models, even if we've already determined that any given model might not work for the district. So we did provide a general overview of what our in-person model would look like following a six-foot difference, a distance, excuse me. To summarize, we would need to hire approximately 54 new teachers across the district, along with the materials, technology requirements, and furniture needed for this to happen. It is a cost that we could probably not, we would not be able to handle. So we did include what our model would look like. But again, in the interest of this being a preliminary plan and explaining what we know from our feasibility study, we were clear, we will be clear to the Department of Education that this is not something that we feel is feasible for us at this time. As I mentioned a little earlier, the department has asked us to look at things that would summaries for each of these, so that's really important. We wanted to look at the hybrid model and really kind of flesh it out and start to think about what this might look like in Nantucket Public Schools from pre-K all the way through grade 12. So we have come up with an idea of four different cohorts. Cohort A, which would be a group of students that would be in-person for the majority of the week. This would include in-person instruction on Monday and Tuesday, and then again on Thursday and Friday. This group would include our high-needs students, the students who really need the in-person instruction. That would include our special education students, who are considered high-needs, in substantially separate classrooms, and others as well. Possibly our English learners, economically disadvantaged students. So we must give, the state is requiring that we give priority to these students for an in-person option for learning. Our cohort B and our cohort C, these two groups of students across the district would be in-person for two days at a time. So we would either have them together. Cohort B could be Mondays and Tuesdays, and Cohort C would be Thursday and Friday. So Cohort D, our final group, this is our group of students who must be online or who choose to be online and stay in a remote learning model for the entirety of the educational period of learning. So Wednesday would be a full remote day for all students, where the building can be cleaned and disinfected, because we would be having a new cohort of students coming in in the second half of the week. All students would be learning from home on this day or from a location where they have access to computers. Teachers would have built-in time on this day for professional development, for some training, and for collaborative meetings. This could also be used, this day could also be used for IEP meetings, for small group check-ins with our students. Other students' support opportunities for children who are in need. We're looking very carefully at how this might work for teachers and students with regard to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. We know that teaching and learning is going to look extremely different than what we are all used to under this model. And there's so much to consider as we learn how to bring in different styles of instruction. We are talking a lot about flipped classroom models, blended learning, self-paced learning, project-based learning. All of these pieces involve professional development and learning and having a whole shift of education. And we know that it'll be necessary to really provide targeted training and professional development for this to work. We will be fleshing out a lot of these details in the coming days with our curriculum and scheduling task force committees, but also with our district leadership team as we start to really pick apart all of the pieces, what will work, what we're not sure will work. And I do want to reiterate, we are all in a similar place to probably many, many districts across the country. We are all learning how to potentially implement this model. So in then sharing our model about full remote learning, we want to be sure that all of our students across the district are able to have internet connectivity at home, and that every student will have a school-issued device. Most of our school-issued devices are Chromebooks, so we would continue to make sure that any student who does not have a school-issued device yet will get one. There will be, similar to what we saw in the spring, there will be activities as part of our learning model that will be synchronous, which means it will be an online virtual meeting as a whole group, whole classroom, for example, small groups, or maybe even individual online meetings with teachers. There will also be a whole section of asynchronous activities, learning experiences, that include things like independent work, self-paced assignments, projects, prerecorded mini lessons that teachers would prepare. Attendance is going to be recorded regularly for all synchronous activities. And there are definitely going to be more specific and rigorous requirements for participation. Time on learning is going to be extended. We will see more expectations. We are not recommending, however, that all online, that this be all online in front of a screen. We are not planning to have students sit in front of a screen for a full school day. That is not the expectation. However, we are going to be raising the rigor when it comes to our remote learning program. All remote learning instruction will be clearly aligned with the state standards, as we are expected to follow state standards in our new school year. And definitely, the activities, the lessons, the units, the instruction must be more robust and specific. Our students will be held accountable through assessments that will be aligned to grade and content level standards. And we will be grading students. Grades will represent a summary of the student assessments that we will be giving through remote learning. Report cards will return similar to the way we reported grades and progress for students prior to our closures in the spring. Teachers will provide regular feedback to students and parents. This is a very important part of remote learning, as it is also for hybrid learning. It is possible that we will be considering adopting a uniform online learning management system. The state is talking about offering a state approved learning management system that would allow for easy access for students, teachers, and parents to reach learning activities in the remote model as easily and as quickly as possible. It will also provide remote and learning self-paced, excuse me, remote and hybrid self-paced instruction, which means there will be lessons that are already available. And we would see how this could potentially work for us with regard to an integration into our hybrid model or for our full remote model. Districts were also asked in this preliminary plan to outline how our high-needs students, including those with disabilities, our English learners, and our economically disadvantaged students would be supported within each of these models. We feel that we would need to prioritize full in-person learning for these students and make sure that they have the option to be with us face-to-face as much as possible. All of the necessary supports that are required through federal and state mandates for IEPs for students with disabilities and for English learner education would be applied. In the document that the school committee received, there are some specifics, but we have a lot more work to do on particularly what this is going to look like. We know that there are a lot of different areas that we need to flesh out and really specify. And we hope that between now and the beginning of August, that things will start to kind of come together and become more clear as we are receiving more guidance from the state, as we're learning more about what is really quality instruction in hybrid and remote models, and understanding also more about health trends of the virus, and understanding how that affects opening of school. We understand how important it is for these plans, particularly hybrid to remote, have to be aligned and have to potentially be seamless if we have to make adjustments based on health trends that are happening in the community. So we understand that we have a gargantuan task ahead of us. And I feel that with the amount of people we have working in the task force, the quality of educators and parents and administrators and everyone who is involved, I feel very well-supported. I feel that our district is in a good place. In speaking with my colleagues on the Cape and Islands with other superintendents across the district, we are in quite a good place. We have thought things out carefully. There are still a lot of districts that are grappling with what is going to work best for them. And it is challenging. It is a challenging thing. It is the most intricate puzzle that I have ever had to deal with in my life. So I appreciate your support with this, and I would love to take any questions that you might have. I have to say that I might not have an answer for all of them, but I am happy to hear your questions and include them in part of the research that we'll be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Jen, would you like to have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Beth, for your presentation. I think that was great, just to get a feel for where we're at right now. Understanding that it's likely to change, most definitely. Question, I just want to make sure that Roberto is on one of these task forces as we're moving forward to in-person or hybrid opportunities for our students.
Thank you for bringing that up. So Roberto and I had an appointment that had to be shifted. He is dealing with some town issues and was unable to meet with me this week. But we are going to meet in the beginning of next week to do a full walkthrough of our buildings and to talk about his role in the reopening plan that we are going to have. And he will definitely be part of either our Health and Safety Committee or at least Expectations as he is able to participate. But he and I will certainly have regular standing meetings as we go forward to make sure that anything that we're planning is approved and is supported by the Department of Public Health at Nantucket.
Great. Thank you, Beth. One other question I have is, you know, we've had a lot of feedback and hearing from people in the community that some of our seasonal summer residents or visitors might decide to stay on Nantucket and enroll their students. Can you just talk a little bit about that and how we can plan for that potential increase in number?
Sure. I was expecting to talk about that in the enrollment report, but I'm happy to do it now, if you'd like. So currently, we have, through this Office of Central Registration, we have, since July 1, I believe, we have 10 new students who have enrolled. That is, these are students from out of districts, you know, obviously. And the interesting thing is, we have probably lost around the same amount of those students. So we're almost even as to where we ended the year, this year. We have not yet had a large number of parents and families requesting information. And so I want to request to anyone out there who may be considering enrolling in Nantucket Public Schools, so please let us know. This is incredibly crucial to understanding our planning. We are counting very specifically classroom spaces and the ability to bring students in. So if people are out there and they want to enroll, we need to know. So we, you know, we hope that people will come to us and inquire and begin the process, if that is their plan.
Great. Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Steve, would you like to go next?
Well, I have a lot. Probably want to save me for the end. Although I want to comment first, Beth, this is a lot more than I expected. It's great. It's a terrific start. And it certainly was a significant help to my blood pressure to have you at least temper, at least tentatively, settling on six feet and hybrid. So that takes about half my questions off the list, by the way. Staffing in a hybrid model, because it looks like that's where we're going. What are you anticipating? And you can say you don't know yet. I understand we have a ways to go here. But staffing, both pedagogically speaking, teachers and teaching assistants and custodial, you still anticipating a need for large numbers in both of those areas?
That's a good question. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to say I don't know. It's something that is weighing heavily on all of us. We understand that staffing is going to be a challenge. We also know that it is important for us to really define our model and what that means with regard to what the expectations are for teachers. And so we will get to that point as to what we need. But certainly, with the classroom spaces more limited, because now we do not have the same number of students in the building, we may not need that many additional staff when it comes to a hybrid model, because we assume that we'll have a reduced number of students in our classrooms. So we will not need to extend to those non-traditional spaces like the cafeteria or the gym or the auditorium, which are really not ideal spaces for classrooms. So we hope that with the existing staff that we have, that we will be able to understand better who is available and who is able to do in-person hybrid with the CDC guidelines in place, who is able to do that. We also know that there will be teachers and staff that are unable to do that, and they will be working in more of a remote environment. We also know that there are students and families that will not come back in a hybrid model. They will want to stay in a remote learning environment. So we will need to determine how that's going to work. And again, it is challenging, and I don't really have an answer as of yet, but it is on everyone's mind and the district leadership teams planning and fleshing out of this. And there are always flurries of emails and texts and a lot of discussion that goes on when we meet regularly, as well as in all of our committees and across the district. So I don't have an answer yet, but we know that we have to really define carefully so that we can identify how that is going to happen. Most likely, a commitment survey is going to need to go out, and we're going to need to have both staff and our parents and families commit to a model that they know that they are going to have to follow, based on either high risk or based on a strong choice. So we need to see how that's going to look very soon. So I would venture out to say that we are going to be sending out another survey, and I understand that people feel surveyed out, but we have to gather this information. It is really crucial. So thank you very much for those of you who are giving us that information and is helping with our planning.
I don't think you should be apologizing for sending surveys. I don't think you should be apologizing for sending surveys. While I attended the mask meeting last night with 230 other school committee members, and they were sending a lot of surveys, and I hope now that we can put a tentative agreement to do hybrid on the table, that people will be more willing to directly answer those questions, and that actually answered one of my questions. Where are we going to come up with, and this will be a big I-don't-know, substitutes for any staff members who actually come down with COVID while teaching?
Yep, you're right, it's a big I-don't-know. However, you know, we are, we are thinking outside of the box, we're looking at, you know, opportunities, you know, we, and again, I'm not going to promise anything, these are just ideas that are floating around out there, but you know, maybe we need to look at some building substitutes, long-term substitutes that become part of our school year so that we know we will have some available to us if that may happen. It is challenging, it is, you know, we are, we are not sure, and we have to also consider the Nantucket Island factor. It is not as easy as it might be on the mainland to find a cadre of substitute teachers who would, would be able to do that. We have to look at our current staff and see where they are available within their licensure, and I'm not suggesting that I would be changing people's roles or people's responsibilities, but all of this has to be considered. So, there are a lot of things that we have to take into account, and if any of our teachers were to come down with the virus, we would have to certainly have something in place, a plan in place with substitute coverage for that teacher. So, it is to be determined, but it is not something-
I would hope that offering full-time sub, because those would be at full teacher rates, will be a motivating factor for more people to be willing to take on this responsibility. I forgot to get back to, do you anticipate that we're still going to need additional custodial staff, given all the cleaning?
I might refer to Diane O'Neil, if she's present, to speak to that. If we were in the hybrid model, I believe that we might be in a good place, but I'm not going to speak for Diane, so if you're available, Diane, to answer that question, that would be great. We can't hear you, Diane.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, if we're in the hybrid model, I think we're going to be okay. We have, we have permission to add one custodian at the intermediate school, because we have, since, since the shutdown, we, we were down a custodian and we were down a supervisor at night. So, I haven't filled the supervisor position yet at night, but I, we did advertise today, yesterday, yesterday, for a new custodian over at that building. That's a pretty large building, and to only have three people on at night is just not going to work. So, we upped it to four, so that was a huge improvement for us. As far as adding anymore, I really won't know until the whole plan is in place and we see how much we can get done and in what period of time. You know, there's a whole bunch of other ideas up there, adding different teaching spaces, and that will add time. It's, it's really all about, it's a numbers game, it's all about time and how much we can get done in that period of time with the people we have. So, I think it's to be determined, but I, as I said, we have a really close eye on it, and we're working on filling the slots as we go.
Yeah, I would think we would need more people during the day. My last question, for the moment anyway, is a more general question. When are we going to look at, and by we, I mean the committee and so on, the protocols? I have some concerns about a few of the protocols. Is that a topic for tonight or for another meeting?
I might defer to the chair because we have not discussed the protocol pieces. The protocols will come into play into our final comprehensive document. I would be happy to entertain any questions that you have. If you'd like to email me those questions, I can, I can work on getting answers to them. That, at the current time, I'm not sure. So, Pauline, I don't know if you have anything to add there?
Yes, I would just say to the entire committee that after we've heard this presentation, I would encourage you to send me questions following this presentation and continue as questions come up for you. We will get to the layout of how we will and when we will meet in a little bit further down the agenda, so I don't want to take time now on that, but we will have time to look at the final plan, and we will have time to meet before we have to vote on it, so that we'll have time to go back and forth with questions.
And is, if you know, our final version of the protocols supposed to be attached to our final plan on August the 10th?
There is no specific section that talks about the expectations for the protocol to be included. I would imagine that there needs to be reference to them, in particular, that we are following what the protocols, the given protocols have been, the guidance that we've received, but our specific protocols, there is no guidance through the two-step process that states that we have to include or be specific. I feel personally that we do need to do that, and that we will be including our protocols. There may be a need for us to adjust them based, again, on what is happening in the community, what is happening as time goes on, as we get closer to the opening of school, things may change a little bit. So, I plan to include protocols as I can within the final comprehensive plan.
Yeah, because, I mean, a couple of things jumped out at me since you mentioned the community, and those are the triggers for when we would close schools, when we would send cohorts home to quarantine, and that sort of stuff is going to be pretty important. I'll just note, we added two more diagnosed cases today, so it's now up to 38, and on its way to being triple what it was a month ago. Thank you, and I mean, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Steve, I mean that too. Zona, would you like to go next, please?
Sure, I want to say, you know, we are at the beginning of a plan that's going to be comprehensive, that's going to have all kinds of moving parts. I think it's a little unfair right now to ask certain questions. There are certain, there are lots of thoughts crossing all of our minds, and I think emails and questions through the chair and back and forth, we can help bring the plan along. I want to encourage everyone on the team, do your best, that's all we can ask of you. This is something that, again, we could never have imagined being put in this position, and we are always thinking about what's best, what's in the best interest of our teachers, staff, and student, because together they make a school. Thank you guys for your efforts, and rest assured, we will be passing on some thoughts that we have, because you know, you think about the bathrooms, are you going to mark off certain stalls, your cleaning staff, you're going to have protocols, you're going to have spaces that you don't use in the entire school. It goes on and it goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Zona, for those comments, spot on. Tim, would you like to have questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to say thank you very, very much, Beth. I think it's an outline, and I think we have to fit, fill in the pieces, and that's when it gets interesting. I mean, I can think of situations where if we have a kid at the elementary school that gets sick, how we're going to deal with that kid until the parents come and pick them up. So, I think there's a lot of little spaces that all of a sudden are going to become very big as we move through this, but I think it's encouraging, we sort of have an outline and an approach, and we'll see how that fits in. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, I echo my fellow committee members, and this has been a monumental task, and I know you're not anywhere finished yet, but I know the hours that you and your team have put in are just incredible. So, thank you to you, Dr. Hallett, and your entire team and team of committees. I have the privilege of sitting on the Community and Parent Advisory Committee that you formed, and, you know, it was very interesting and good. I know we're going to be meeting every week, but it was really good to have the opportunity to hear from parents and community members. When I was initially reading through the draft last night and this morning, I, sort of in, sort of in my early morning blur, I was reading, and then I was like, wow, you've got to move out special education and EL and community school, and what the heck is our school going to look like and how are we going to function? And then I realized that was Section 1, or that was the entire school going back, and it was pretty much everybody out, if we were to add everybody in. And then as we got to the hybrid and the remote, I realized the layout process. I would ask, though, for your committees to continue, and maybe this is still my community school hat I'll never lose, is that we are going to have working parents who, depending on when their children are in school, they are probably going to need to rely on after-school care, and I realize what that is going to mean to Diane and her staff of preparing a building, but I'm just, I'm sure you're already discussing this, and I know Tracy is on. Again, I would think of the community school as being a resource and how they can help, but I would think the after-school piece is going to be critical for our working parents as well as the, in our school day.
Absolutely. Tracy and I have certainly spoken about what extended day could look like with the community school, and we've also had an opportunity to speak just preliminarily with Jamie Foster of the Boys and Girls Club to understand his thoughts about this and how perhaps a partnership would work with the Boys and Girls Club and their spaces. So, there's still so much to determine, but I am so pleased with the willingness for partnership and the willingness for the community to really come together around the schools and understanding that this is a monumental shift for all of us, and we're going to need to all come together for this to work well. And so, certainly with Tracy and Jamie, and I'm sure there are many other organizations that would step right up if necessary to make sure that there was the appropriate after-school care and for our students.
Great, thank you, thank you, Beth. Beth, if you would, I'm going to have you just go straight on to the next item on the agenda, which is the two-step process, and then after that, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Thank you.
So, I've actually combined the two, the district fall reopening plans and guidance along with the plan submission. As I had mentioned to you, the two-step process, we are about to reach the first step, which is the July 31 submission, which I gave you an extended outline of what we will be giving. They're actually, they're asking us to condense to minimums of 300 words in each of those sections. I offered to the committee and also tonight, an explanation that was much larger. I will certainly condense and make my, make the first step of the process a little bit more succinct. In the second step, which is August 10th currently, that is when we will be providing a much more comprehensive plan. So, I really did combine A and B together on the agenda, but I'm happy to just outline that of those two deadlines that will be following. So, I'm happy to head on to enrollment. We did speak a little bit about the question that has been asked many times about the, about whether or not some of our summer residents are planning to stay and enroll their children, and as I had said, I hope that they will let us know so that we can include them and plan for additional, additional students in our schools. With regard to our numbers, the current data that we have available is from our March SIM submission in 2020, and our, our students at that time were, the enrollments was 1,678 students. The official enrollment tally for June of 2020 has not yet been released because the data is being validated, and so we won't have that to share with you. But what we can say is that 133 seniors at Nantucket High School graduated, roughly all of them graduated, and we are seeing a smaller junior class next year with 100, or excuse me, rising senior class. 119 students will be seniors in 2020, 2021. So, so our enrollment outside of what we think might be happening based on what we hear in the community is pretty much the same. We have not seen a significant increase in enrollment. So, that's where, that's what we have with enrollment, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Beth. I would like to open this up to public comment. I would just like to remind everybody, this is an opportunity for people who are watching to submit questions. It is not a dialogue to go back and forth, but I thought it would be helpful to have this session now so that if there are folks watching that have concerns or questions or something that they didn't hear tonight, it's just good information for us to have so that we can make sure we get that information out to the community and to our families at another time. So, I know there's a bit of a delay, so I'm going to give it some time, and I know Jen Erickson is keeping an eye on that for me. For my committee members, just as a reminder, we are going to move into executive session after we have taken the vote for the COVID-19 Negotiations Subcommittee, so I will be asking for a motion to move into executive session shortly.
If people want to comment, they would put it into the chat.
Sorry, is that Steve? That's Steve, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I thought I was rather distinctive, but yes.
Couldn't see you.
If people want to make a comment or ask a question, they do it in the chat? Is it chat on YouTube that they're looking at?
It's YouTube, yes. And if somebody is making a comment, they do need to identify themselves, please, by name. I guess that's the only way you can identify yourself perhaps, but that would be helpful. Jen, how are we looking? Are you seeing any activity on the chat? Okay. So, Bobby Planter has a question, and he's stating he thinks that we should have school remotely, and can we do that? And I would say, Bobby, that we have the three-stage plans that Dr. Hallett did present this evening, and I believe that at this time, Dr. Hallett and her committee members are working on the hybrid model, which is going to be a mix of remote and in-person education, and as this rolls out, things are changing daily, and I know Dr. Hallett will keep us updated as things change. Dr. Hallett, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, just that, again, I am always happy to receive questions from anyone in the community regarding our plans. Again, this is still a work in progress, and a lot is being determined as we go forward, but, but your questions are helpful to us, so, so feel free to reach out, and hopefully I can include that as part of our process.
Madam Chairman, if I may, and only because I saw-
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Steve, excuse me for one second, I was speaking. I would say also that we can, the students will have the option of choosing to work remotely, or, and also there are opportunities for some of our students to work online. So, if there are specific questions to individuals, I would recommend reaching out to your principals, if you're in the high school, to the principal, Mandy Vassal, to see what the opportunities are for individual students. Steve, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just wondering, since I see Mr. Maury here, is, are sports a part, or are they going to be a part of our plan? Or are they going to be a part of our plan? When is that going to be decided and how? If we know.
You know what? I'm not going to ask Mr. Maury to answer that at the moment because that's not part of what's in the documents this evening.
I wasn't asking Mr. Maury, I was asking if it is going to be in the document, if it's part of it or it's going to be.
Right. I would imagine that it is. Beth, is that something that you've seen?
Yes, we, we would like to include a, a section on, 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 on school athletics. Yes.
Thank you. Chris, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
All right. You wasn't on the spot. Okay, I'm going to end public comment as I see no more comments coming in. So thank you, everybody. And thank you again for a great presentation and a very thorough draft. It's been tons of work and thank you to your committee. Committees, 100-plus people. Okay, moving on in the agenda, I would like to have a motion, please, to make a vote to create a COVID-19 negotiation subcommittee. May I have a motion, please?
Motion from Zona Butler.
Thank you, Zona. May I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Steve's second. Is there any discussion? Then I'm going to take a roll call vote. Tim, may I have your vote, please?
Zona Butler, aye.
Thank you. Tim, may I have your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Janella?
Aye.
Thank you. And Steve Sodervik?
Aye.
Pauline Proch, aye. Thank you. Okay, well now I am going to ask for a motion to move into executive session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. May I have a second? May I have a second?
Zona Butler, second.
Thank you. To point someone out in public media.
Excuse me. Pauline, may I interrupt for one second? This is Jen Erickson. I'm sorry, I didn't have time to type fast enough and Tracy Malu did have questions that came in. I apologize for interrupting, but it may be something.
Okay, so I'm just reading Tracy Malu's question, which is when, when school committee meetings will be moved back to the LGI? Since we are talking about reopening the buildings for school, has this been discussed yet? I don't know, Beth, if you want to comment on that or if there is a comment to make or if we can look into that. I feel like that's part of the governor's outline, that he is at this current moment requesting public meetings such as this to be virtual or remote meetings. So, but if we learn more, we will make sure that we get that information out to you. And I'm seeing a note, but I'm not, I'm sorry, Logan, I'm not understanding. To vote in person, yes, to go into.
You, you will need to, you will need to have a motion and vote the process in person to that committee prior to executive.
Prior to the executive session?
It is a reorganizational meeting of, of sorts.
Okay, so we are, so then is Beth then to announce who she has on her subcommittee or is it just the school committee member?
Just the school committee member, somebody nominated.
Okay, okay. And Beth, you have noted that you have a smaller committee going forward and you've asked for one school committee member to participate. And I would like as chair to ask Zona to participate in that meeting or that committee, if you would, Zona?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. May I have?
Chair, if I may.
Excuse me.
I don't believe that it's the superintendent's decision who bargains with the NTA. It's a, it's a contract issue between the NTA and us. And we have always decided as a committee to select two people. We have two people who are have conflicts of interest. And we've always selected two people, much as we did for the regular negotiations. And I think that's what we should be doing now.
Beth, Dr. Hallett is not selecting anyone from the school committee. She's putting her team together and I am making the suggestion that we have a school committee member, one school committee member present. I believe that we are going to have input from our town council as this is negotiation. So I'm as chair, I am suggesting we have one school committee member.
Well, I'm, I'm still suggesting that we do as we will have always done and have two.
I, I hear your comments, Steve.
Well, it's not a comment, I guess. It, it would have to come down. It appears that it's going to have to come down to a vote of the committee.
And we have a motion out and I'm looking for a second, that I'm asking for a second to have Zona on the negotiations committee, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion further from that? Other than Steve's earlier comments? Okay, may I have a vote, please? Jen, Ella? Zona Butler?
Yes.
Steve Sodervik?
No.
Tim Lepri, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And Pauline Proch, yes? Okay, do we now, are we now able to move into executive session? I believe we are, yes. Okay, so we have a motion, I believe, already to go into executive session. We had a second. And now I'm just going to do a roll call to move into executive session. Zona Butler?
Much, Rich.
Yes.
Thank you. Tim Lepri?
Aye.
Thank you. Janella?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve Sodervik?
Aye.
Thank you, Pauline Proch, aye. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to remind committee members to come out of this meeting, please, and then look in your email for the new link. And then we will resume this meeting to close the public comment, I mean, public meeting after executive session. Thank you, everybody.
So I'm a little confused. Do we stay and wait or is the public done?
Oh yeah, I don't understand. Did everyone just leave or I don't know what's going on either? Oh, did they go into private?
Yeah. They just leave. I don't know. Right, Jen?
We could just hang out together.
But I, I'm confused because the last thing she said is that they're ending the public.
They, they voted to go into executive session. By the way, you guys are on NCTV, so just be aware. Okay, they ended the regular, they didn't end the meeting. They voted to go into executive session and they will be coming back.
So. So.
But they will be coming back to adjourn, to adjourn the meeting.
Are they going for like an hour or like two minutes?
I don't know.
Thank you for clarifying. I'll, I'll just wait and I, I'll double check the agenda. I don't think there's anything else that I need to present or speak to, so I'll just wait. Or it seems like I'm the only one staying. So I don't know, Red Sox opening day in five minutes, maybe I'm leaving.